At this time, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order CPS Energy Board of Trustees Special Meeting to be held on July 22, 2021 at 3:00 PM. Ask Ms. Shannon Ramirez to confirm the quorum.
Yes, sir, we have Trustee Steen, we have Vice Chair Gonzalez via WebEx, we have Trustee Kelly, and yourself, Chair Dr. Mackey, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Ramirez, and at this time, we'll have our safety message, invocation, and pledge allegiance by Mr. Nate Myers.
Thank you, Dr. Mackey. We first wanted to review the evacuation procedures so we are prepared to be safe in the event of an emergency. If you hear the fire alarm, follow the instructions in the announcement delivered through the PA system. If asked to evacuate, use the glass door exiting out of the boardroom to the outside. If that door is blocked, use the door at the rear of the room. Verbally alert others in the room of the fire and evacuate. Then move to the main parking lot in front of headquarters or the AT&amp;T parking lot over the McCullough and Brooklyn bridges, whichever route is safer, and await further instructions. In the event of a situation like this, our security team will be monitoring the situation and will notify the appropriate emergency services and team members. We also have employees nearby who are trained to administer first aid if needed. Safety is a top priority at CPS Energy, and while we hope this information is never needed, we want to be sure we are always ready. Now, will you please stand with me for an invocation? We come before you today to give you honor and praise. Thank you for every gift that we have been given. We thank you for the opportunity to come and gather together this day. We ask for your hand a blessing on this meeting of the CPS Energy Board of Trustees. We ask that you guide and direct our meeting so that it is full of wisdom, productivity, and respect for one another. Thank you for helping us to accomplish our work and our goals this day. Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The next agenda item is public comment, which provides an opportunity for members of the public to share thoughts on any of this meeting's posted agenda items. We do not have any public comment registrants for this meeting, so I will turn the meeting back to you, Chair Dr. Mackey.
Thank you, Ms. Myers. At this time, I don't have any chair announcements or comments, and we'll turn it over to the CEO to give her update.
Thank you. I'm going to make this short and hit some highlights since we will have a formal meeting and a more thorough set of presentations this coming Monday. But I did want to-
Madam CEO, can I ask you a question? How long will you take on your-
Not very long.
Okay. Because the purpose of today is a special meeting and is an executive session and to talk about personnel.
Yes, sir.
You have the floor, Ms. CEO.
Thank you so much. Okay. Yeah, I wanted to make sure that there were key things that I put on your radar. So we did launch the new board member search. There was a meeting after the last regular special meeting, and the nominations committee got together, but we have already started posting on social media, and the media ads will run, and then there was a story that was put out in the San Antonio Report, and I don't think we can talk enough about that search process. I do want to escalate for you, we made a, it's just getting to be a bigger issue. I went to a Federal Reserve meeting today, I've gone to several, but there continues to be pressure amongst all businesses with supply chain issues. Materials for all types of businesses, not just lumber, it's not just chips, it's all types of materials that we're having problems for. And so we're going to continue to raise this to you. The other thing that we are seeing across Texas and across the nation are price escalations, which are very, very concerning to us. And so I'm going to end up giving you more information, but it is getting to be a huge issue that even the Federal Reserve is looking at, as well as labor pressures. We are seeing difficulty in hiring at the frontline and all the way to the top executives in retaining people. We have more people retiring than we expected at this point in time, and so we are seeing pressures across our organization. And my last major update is, tonight is the fifth RAC meeting. So we continue to present them with a lot of information. I think they're making a tremendous amount of progress, and we'll give you more updates along the way. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam CEO. Mayor, has there been any spike with the COVID in the city of San Antonio? Can you give us an update on that?
Sure, yes. Obviously, people have been watching what's happening with regard to COVID-19, not just in our community but across the country. The Delta variant, which is a very infectious and highly transmissible form of the virus, has begun to be present in pretty much every community. It is the majority of our cases, so we are seeing an uptick. Our positivity rate now is 13.5%, which just about three weeks ago was a fraction of that. So we are watching this very carefully. The community and Metro Health continue to put out guidance that is anchored to the CDC, which includes mask wearing for those who are not vaccinated, and caution on the part of everybody, even if you are vaccinated, including if you're in crowds, recommendation, particularly if you're in close quarters or if you are immunocompromised, even if you are vaccinated and continue to wear a mask. The judge and I will be having a press conference tomorrow to kind of go over the new data and continue to emphasize the guidance that we have from the CDC and the Metro Health, along with any new numbers related to vaccinations. At approximately 2:00 tomorrow, it might be a little bit after that, but we'll be having a meeting of all of our health officials that have been involved in the pandemic response tomorrow afternoon at the EOC. So please put that on your calendar. Last thing I'll say is that what is evident about this latest phase that we're in with regard to the Delta variant is that COVID-19 is still present in our community, continues to evolve, continues to require our focus and effort to contain it, but most importantly, that the tools that we have available to us to end the virus are in our hands. Vaccines continue to be the best and most reliable form of defense. It won't necessarily prevent you from getting infected, but it certainly will save your life if you are in almost every case. So they are readily available, they are free, they don't require insurance, and so you need to go get one if you care about yourself and your community. Last thing I'll say is that we all do care about the kids in our community, many of which who are under 12 and aren't eligible to receive the vaccine. If you don't have a child yourself and simply want our community to come back open, which requires us obviously to start schools and have healthy schools in the fall, get a vaccine because that is going to be the quickest way we can get things back to the way we expect them to be for the school year to start safely and effectively. So bottom line, get vaccinated if you aren't, and if you are, just please continue to exercise common sense and adhere to the health guidance that we have.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Ramirez-
I've got a quick question.
Hold on, hold on.
Real quickly, I just wanted to note that obviously the mayor has joined us at 3:05.
Okay.
I'd also like to note that Vice Chair Gonzalez is not on WebEx, so I'd like to clarify who's present and also note for the minutes that at all times we have had a quorum during this meeting.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mrs. Steen.
Madam CEO, do you have stats on our workforce in terms of being vaccinated?
Fred has some information.
Yes, sir, Trustee Steen. So currently, we have a total of 533 of our employees who have been positive throughout the entire period of COVID-19. Currently, as it stands right now, we have 42 of our workforce members that are in quarantine. We do have one individual in the hospital also, and we had a net increase yesterday of three, and over the past two weeks, we've seen a net increase of approximately 15. So we've seen a significant uptick in our positive rates.
And that may not seem like a lot, but we were down to zero cases, you know, each day, one. They were trickling in. One employee stopped me yesterday, his entire family got the variant, and granddaughter got it. So our senses are heightened for this issue.
But do we know about our workforce in terms of vaccinations?
We don't, sir, because we're approaching this through a voluntary mechanism, and because of HIPAA rules, they can't, we're opting them to disclose who. But they are registering themselves through our occupational health department that we have. My estimate number is approximately 60% of our workforce, I feel, are vaccinated, which is closely similar to the community as well.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Bonwell.
Mr. Bonwell, do we have out there at the plants, at any of the plants, can you see an uptick at any of the plants, like the operators and things of that sort?
No, the positives that we've seen, Chair Mackey, so far are in our electric distribution and gas areas.
Have we come up with a plan to make sure that we're providing them, you know, like we did before, and operators, making sure that they stay safe and-
Yes, so-
You got a plan in place for that?
Yes, sir. So when I went into the plants just a few weeks ago, we were still maintaining our distance protocols, our mask protocols, and we also have established, like we do in this room, wipes and alcohol wipes as well. So we're, and also, we maintain a separation of operators through Plexiglas through some of the key areas. So we've maintained that, and we're now at a 50% occupancy rate of most of our buildings. We had planned to move to 75% on Labor Day, but we may take a pause on that based on the current situation.
Thank you. At this time, Ms. Ramirez, would you take us into closer executive session?
Yes, sir. At this time, the board is going to recess into executive session to discuss matters that have been duly posted under several provisions of Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, including attorney-client matters under Section 551.071, deliberations and other authorization on real property under Section 551.072, prospective gifts or donations under Section 551.073, personnel matters under Section 551.074, security personnel or devices under Section 551.076, to deliberate regarding security audits and devices under Section 551.089, to deliberate under Texas Government Code, Section 418.183 Subsection F, about confidential information under the Texas Homeland Security Act, economic development negotiations under Section 551.076, and to deliberate, vote, or take final action upon competitive matters under Section 551.086. At the conclusion of the executive session, the board will reconvene in open session and continue the meeting. It is 3:14 PM right now.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Ramirez, and we will proceed to executive session.
Mr. Ramirez, would you please bring us back from executive session?
Yes, sir. It is 4:06 PM and the board has concluded executive session. I can confirm that there were no votes taken and no matters were discussed that were not part of the posted agenda. We do have a quorum. We have trustee Steen, we have trustee Kelly, the mayor, and yourself, sir. Although all members are not present, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Ramirez. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move.
We have a motion by Mr. Kelly. Do we have a sucking?
Second.
We have a sucking by the mayor. Does the board have any further discussion? All in favor of adjarring, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you.